Good evening.
Good evening.
I call the September 26 meeting, a work session of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam first, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody? Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker? Mayor Rowe?
Here. And Dr. Patton, the first item.
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Our first presentation this evening is entitled Crime Data, Trends, and Other Social Indicators. In January of 2016, at the request of Dr. Whitaker, the City Manager reached out to Dr. Melvina Sumter, Associate Professor of the Department of Sociology and Criminal Justice Director for the Institute of the Study of Race and Ethnicity and the African-American and African Studies major and minor at Old Dominion University. I requested direction to assist the City of Portsmouth in beginning the community engagement process to address violence and crime issues that are plaguing not only our city but cities across this nation. On January 31, 2016, the team agreed that a needs assessment to understand the specific challenges in Portsmouth should be the first step in the process in which the project officially commenced in September 2016. The data collection process included collection of secondary data, census, school and human services, also the collection of official data from FBI arrest statistics and crimes known to the police department within the City of Portsmouth. Finally, surveys and interviews for high school students, teachers, and staff, and also civic league participants and faith-based leaders. Throughout the data collection process, we have begun to work on initiatives to address some of the challenges noted from the Crime Reversal Initiative, which also impacts poverty. This evening, Dr. Randy Gayner, Director of the Social Science Research Center and Professor of the Department of Sociology and Criminal Justice, will provide an overview of the risk and protective factors approaching and findings from the crime data. The second presentation is a report back from Mrs. Sherri Neal on the 2018 State and Legislative Initiatives. The seven initiatives have been evaluated as to their legislative viability. Following the presentation, City Council will need to identify their top three initiatives. I present to you Dr. Gayner.
Thank you, sir. Hi, thank you so much. We're working on the PowerPoint slide right now. So, I must admit, I'm very nervous in front of this bold -- just push that button, thank you so much. But I'll try to -- I know that you guys have a busy schedule and you want me to come and be as clean and direct as possible.
I got you.
You got me?
Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Appreciate you all coming here. I know you guys had a big meeting yesterday, and so the fact that you came out very next day, we really appreciate that. So, as Dr. Patton was saying, we have been hard at work looking at a needs assessment. And I think the answers are good. Not perfect, but good. So, I'm going to talk for about six slides, very quickly, because I talk fast. And then Dr. Tansy Van De Car Burton is going to take up the next set of slides. But just to give you some background, I think she mentioned that we did interviews with the police, we did interviews with high school students, with faculty, we did interviews with faith-based leaders and civic league participants. We started with presidents, and that didn't get us as far as we wanted, so we did participants. These are some of the things we're doing. They're examples. They're not trying to show a trend or anything else. But if you look at this right here, these are the school districts, the high school school districts. Over here, we have counts of residential burglaries. These are the types of things that we're sort of doing. If Chief Chapman's here, I don't -- there she is. They do a far better job of doing the sort of stuff than we do, but it helps us to take it out of her survey and gives us a chance to look at these sorts of things. You've got to pardon me, I'm a statistician, and this is the way I think through things, okay? But all you guys need to think about is the dotted lines here. Those are incidents of aggressive assault, which clearly show a downward trend over time, okay? Over here, we have robberies, again, downward trend, I wouldn't worry about those. Newspaper people like to think about, "Oh, my goodness, we're seeing an upward trend," but no.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
We typically don't interrupt, but could you give us the numbers on the axes? Because they're not hard, but they're difficult to see.
Sure.
The years, what's the base year?
The base year is 2010 to 2015. And then the numbers for robberies are up around 200, going way down to about 150.
Okay. And on the other one?
And on the other one, same thing, 2010 to 2015, up around 160, down to, let's just say, 110, 120. I mean, what I want to do is try to give you a picture of good news on this one. We're seeing -- and these are crimes known to police. So, not exactly calls to police, but calls to police where the police go in and say, "Yeah, we see it. We have good evidence of that." And that's important, because, you know, I was at a presentation recently, and a person was talking about all these domestic violence crimes that were not being recorded. And I went, "But the police don't know that. They go, and if there's nothing happening, you know, they don't have any ..." So, I guess my point to be taken is that, you know, I'm not an apologist for the police department, I'm not anything, I'm just saying that if they go to someplace and there's nothing happening, so this is what is known to them, and I think that's a reasonable sort of starting place. The next slides, and again, we did a lot of this. In fact, we have 140 page document, I knocked it down to 90 pages. That will be being read and worked over soon. These are arrest data, arrest data that is sent to the FBI, Federal Bureau of Statistics, and the story is less fun, right? We're definitely seeing Portsmouth up here, and once again, you're going to say, "Randy, please direct me through this." Basically, we're up here along with Norfolk, okay? Far above Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, and the Commonwealth at large, okay? So, there's a great criminologist who points out that we saw a really huge decline in crimes in the 1990s, huge. And they were in the major cities, Chicago, New York, LA. And he makes a very valid point, yep, but we still have higher crime rates than any other industrialized country out there. So, this is what my point is. We're seeing some huge declines, but we still see problems here in Portsmouth. And I'll let Dr. Van De Car Burton take over from there. But I'm much better at answering questions than delivering talks, so if you do have questions afterwards, I'm happy to talk with you.
Good evening, everyone. In addition to the crime data that Dr. Gayner analyzed, we also wanted to look at other existing data sources to help inform the public safety needs assessment. And so, we looked at other risk factors related to crime and violence. And specifically, we looked at, for this evening, we're sharing some information on economic disadvantage, education, and family, specifically looking at family poverty and unemployment, dropout rates, and child abuse and neglect. And these are often what public administrators and policy, public policy field talks about as wicked problems. These are the intractable problems that all cities face. They are complex, they're persistent, and they're resistant to change, just like poverty, just like crime. So, similar to some of the charts that Dr. Gayner shared, we're comparing Portsmouth, which is the yellow, with some of our neighboring cities, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and Chesapeake, as well as the state as a whole, which is the dark blue line here. And so, if we look at poverty over time in Portsmouth, the rates of poverty of residents living below poverty are much more varied here in Portsmouth than they are in some of the neighboring cities. And, you know, we saw a big jump in 2013, and then we saw a gradual decline. The percent of children living under poverty kind of followed a similar trend for residents as a whole, as might be expected. But again, as some of the crime data that Dr. Gayner shared, Portsmouth and Norfolk, compared to the other cities in the state, are kind of showing economic disadvantage compared to other cities in Hampton Roads and the state. Also, under economic disadvantage, looking at unemployment rates, again, Portsmouth is pretty varied over the time period of 2011 to 2015. Saw a decline from 2012 to 2013, but starting to see a steady increase since 2013. And again, Portsmouth and Norfolk having higher rates of unemployment compared to Chesapeake and Virginia Beach, with Portsmouth rate being about twice that of the state as a whole. And the trend, the increase trend here over the past few years is opposite of what we're seeing from some of the other cities. So, a little bit more positive news in terms of education, looking at dropout rates from 2013 to 2016. And this is not the class of, these are the actual dropout rates from 2013 to 2016. Portsmouth was the highest in 2013, with a little over 10%, but decreasing quite dramatically until 2016, here, with a rate that about matches the Commonwealth, as well as the City of Chesapeake, and Virginia Beach, at a rate of about 4.7. So, seeing a positive trend in terms of dropout rates as an education, a social indicator. And finally, looking at family indicators, child abuse and neglect, another kind of criminal factor, but also a social factor as well. From 2012 to 2015, we again seen some variation in Portsmouth, but the general trend, positive trend downward to rates that are comparable with the other cities, actually lower than Norfolk, and comparable with the rest of the state. So, again, this is just a very small snapshot of all of the data that we've been collecting for the crime and, for the public safety needs assessment and the Crime and Violence Reversal Initiative that we've been working on with Dr. Patton and Dr. Sumter and Mr. Wood here, have been instrumental to the work that we've been doing. But in general, we're seeing a downward trend in the violent crime since 2010, according to the data that's known to the police in the arrest data. But still, as Dr. Gayner pointed out, compared to other cities in the state, violent crime is still high in Portsmouth. And if we look at the crime rates, along with the other social indicators of risk for crime and violence, we see comparative problems of Portsmouth to the other cities. And while these are the wicked problems, they are essential to change. And so, hopefully, when we compile the final report, along with all the other data that we've been collecting from interviews, there's some people in this room that we've done some interviews with, and all the survey data that we collected, you'll have a nice summary of the picture of what's happening in Portsmouth and some recommendations moving forward. And so, we will entertain questions now at this time.
Questions?
Me? So, how do we take this data and change our culture, change our outcomes, improve?
If you will go back to the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. Well, you know, we, our intention is, at the end of the report, to provide some recommendations for moving forward and giving some examples of evidence-based practices that have been used by other, and other cities to address some of these same problems. The Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention provides quite a wealth of information about programs that have been found to be successful and evidence-based for improving some of these issues in communities. And so, it's our intent to include those, at least some examples of those, in the final report to the city.
I think Dr. Sumter.
So, once the report is completed, my intent is to do a thorough review of the report. And in January, on January 31, 2016, a team was assembled. One person, Richard Gray, who is the Public Safety Director in St. Louis, and he was brought to the table because the Public Safety Director in St. Louis is over corrections, police, fire service, and a lot of the entities in the city, to bring him back to the table, to bring Carlisle Holder back to the table, who's a retired warden from the Federal Bureau Prisons and now runs his own firm, and some of the other stakeholders who are at this table, as well as from the five focus areas that we focused on, have a staff person from Portsmouth represented, and other stakeholders in the community. Look at the summary, look at the recommendations, but from there, in a mini retreat, basically, the stakeholders at each, for each focus group, will actually come up with goals, objectives, as well as best practices, in order to help the city move forward. So, that's the first intent in moving forward.
And this ties in, Mayor and members of council, to our Poverty Task Force. This data, the collection period, us really knowing what our challenges are, all of that with this team's going to fold over into our Poverty Task Force.
Yes, because poverty and crime, to a certain extent, they go hand in hand. So, a lot of what we're doing from the Crime Reversal Initiative, so happened, was put together before the Poverty Task Force in February of this year. So, we'll be able to use a lot of those findings in moving forward. But bringing experts in from the field who have actually handled a lot of these problems.
Questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Great, we appreciate it.
Mrs. Neal will now bring forward the FY 2018 State Legislative Initiatives.
Good evening. Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, and members of council, City Manager and staff. This evening, I am going to share with you the results of research that was conducted on the seven state legislative initiatives that was approved by council to move forward in our legislative draft, along with their legislative viability for passage. Okay, so, the discussion this evening will follow this particular format. We'll do a quick review of the development timeline for our state and legislative packages for 2018. I'll present you with the evaluations of the draft 2018 legislative initiatives and their legislative viability. And based on these evaluations, we need council at the end to rank your three topic initiatives. And after that discussion, there were two state public policy issues that still were unresolved as to what your position would be on those, should they come back up again? You have requested some more information on it. At the last time I was before you, we have sent you that information, so just need a little feedback on that one. This one, right? So, quickly looking at our timeline that we developed, we're here in September now. It's been slightly revised, excuse me. For September, the revision included that when we initially put our timeline together, we baked in some time in case we needed public hearings for any charter changes that might have been approved. It's been that we didn't have any, that's been taken off of the list. So, this is where we are in September right now. The October 24th is when we are now scheduled to have our joint legislative meeting with our General Assembly delegation. And pending that there are no changes to our package at that time, then potentially, council can move forward that evening at your regular meeting to adopt your resolutions, both your state and federal packages. However, if there are some changes following, the election on the 7th, on the 14th would be the alternate date for council to actually adopt your final package. If it goes that far down, we're kind of in a crunch at that point, because pre-filing starts on the 20th and ends on the 4th of December. So, quickly looking at what was passed, to aid your decision-making this evening, as I said, I've evaluated the viability for each of the items that we discussed. First one would be modifying HR tack legislation. The request was to, for HR tack to use some of their funds to buy, either buy out the ERC contract or pay down the tolls. So, in reviewing the enabling legislation, and I encapsulated part of the legislation six, seven, and nine, you can read that, and in consultation with the city attorney, we determined that the HR tack has the ability to do this if they still choose. It does not require legislation for this matter. It's a matter of political will. So, at this point, we're saying that we don't recommend any legislation for that particular Moving to the next one, the Payday Lending Act, excuse me. The initiative was to amend this act to allow Virginia municipalities permission to limit the interest rates and the fees on these loans and their respective jurisdictions. Over the past 15 years, efforts have been made to address the fees and fines with this particular act. There have been over 41 bills that have been submitted in that time period, and all of them have failed. Based on this information, this measure is rated as extremely low for legislative viability. Council may want to consider including it in the package as a political statement, not a public policy statement, but it's not recommended at this time that we ask our legislators to move forward with that as a piece of legislation. The next one was the ERC buyout using the state debt capacity. And it's a budget amendment requesting the state to include in their debt capacity funding to buy out the ERC contract and/or buy down the tolls. So, that's a very interesting, creative concept. However, under the current political environment that we're under at this particular moment, according to our Secretary of Finance, Mr. Brown, the state at this time has very little debt capacity left. They are at just about their maximum self-imposed constitutional 5% cap. The AAA state rating is, for the bond rating for the state, is kind of in jeopardy at this moment. I would say the bond rating agencies are very concerned that over the last three years, we've not met our projections for our general fund revenue. And so, the state has taken several one-time initiatives to fix the budget and balance it without increasing taxes and things of that nature. Therefore, and using the rainy day fund. So, there's no appetite at this time for the money committees at the General Assembly to increase their debt capacity. The debt, the bond council meets with the members, Secretary Brown and the governor's staff in December to review the state's fiscal situation. Again, it's kind of extremely low that initiative would go forward, or if we met with any kind of support. On the Virginia Port Authority, it says revised initiative, and it's a revised initiative because you may remember, initially, for the Virginia Port Authority, the suggestion was that we would resubmit the legislation that we put in in 2017 for a grant program that would deal with the economic development and transportation initiatives for the city. That was put in basically as a placeholder, because simultaneously, we had a working group that was meeting to discuss the port and how we could go forward with it. And that working group consisted of my counterparts from Newport News and Norfolk, as well as relative city staff. We also met once with Delegate James and once with Senator Lucas. So, out of those meetings, we came up with an alternative approach for this particular General Assembly session. One of them was to request that the governor increase in his budget, the budget line that we had in our package, I believe it was the year before last, when we increased that line for the impact of our roads from 950 back up to a million where it started. That same budget line, now we're asking the governor to put in his budget, increase it up to 6 million. Letters were sent by the three mayors to the governor, our mayor, Rowe, Mayor Alexander, and Mayor Price, were sent to the governor making this request. The other part of that was for us to, once again, put in for the J-LOCK study, to ask them to update that, so that we could substantiate our claim that the recommendations made in the 1990s study of how the whole cities of port are not benefiting from the presence of the port as much as other parts of the state does, has only gotten worse over 18 years from non-action. It's rated low to moderate on both counts. Due to the fact that we're going into a new administration, we don't know how that's going to shake out with the political environment that's going to be in Richmond. If we work together on this, all three cities and our respective legislators from each city, we may get a little bit more traction on the study, and maybe, if not 6 million, a little more than $1 million on that particular budget line. The next one was restoration of the voting rights for felons. Now, this is an effort that spans over 20 years, a constitutional amendment. Virginia is one of four states whose constitution permanently disenfranchises citizens with past felony convictions, but grants the governors the authority to restore their voting. As of 2014, when Governor McCullough became in, that's when we had some real substantive movement in that area. And you may recall that the governor did a broad sweeping action, where he automated the restoration of rights for people who have completed their sentences, including payment of any fines, fees, and restitution for convictions classified as nonviolent, though it required that each person receive an individualized rights restoration certificate before registering to vote. His policy also changed and broadened the category of people who automatically received their right to vote upon the completion of their sentence, and it shortened the waiting period for others to apply for their rights to be restored, from five to three years. However, it was challenged by Delegate Howell. It went to court, Supreme Court ruled that it was unconstitutional, made him go back. So, the governor went back, and instead, he revised his actions. He restored the right for over 13,000 citizens who had their registrations canceled in the wake of this decision, and to this day, he's already restored the rights for over 200,000 former felons in Virginia. The problem that we have is that he's leaving office, and again, we'll go back to governor's prerogative. This is an issue that I feel is worth continuing to push, even though, depending on what happens, the political climate is something that needs to be kept out there, because it really needs to be changed. So, yes, sir.
Before, can you go to Slide 7 after you finish this one?
Uh-huh. That was my recommendation on this one, so if you want to go to 7?
Did you?
Yes.
Did you cover that?
Oh, did I skip it? Oh, I'm sorry. Kind of hurry up and get through it, so you can get to dinner. I'll get to your 7 o'clock meeting, I'm sorry. Imposition a sales tax, okay. This one, okay. Just a moment. Okay. Okay, this one dealt with the streaming audio and video services, prepaid calling services that are not right now subject to taxation. And so, we were looking at having this amended so that these taxes could be, these services could be taxed in Virginia. Tax did a, Department of Taxation for Virginia did a study in 2014, looking at this issue to see how this tax was faring for the state. And it was set in 2007 at 5% sales tax, when the state took it over from the localities, collecting the tax, and then they send back the respective portions to each locality. Well, since that time, tax looked at it and said, "Well, if there had been increase between 2007 and 2014, if that increased the rate to 5.3%, it would have generated an extra $24.1 million." extra $24.1 million. If they had increased the tax rate to 6%, it would have increased it to 80, over $80 million that would have been shared amongst the localities. They do recommend taxes suggesting that it is increased, and that, they also pointed out that landlines between 2007 and 2014 have decreased by 21.1%. The telecommunications industry revenue is in a sharp decline, and revenue from satellite and radio services and gross receipts over the same time period has decreased by 91.1%. This is an uphill battle, definitely, but I think it's one worth putting forward. It's supported right now by Virginia Municipal League. It should be included in their legislative package. At a Hampton Roads Legislative Liaison Meeting yesterday, I presented it to my colleagues and asked them to consider also supporting it. Virginia First Cities, we're going to ask them to also get behind it and support the issue. We have tax. So there is some momentum behind us to say that it's not just Portsmouth asking for this at this point in time. Nationally, there are efforts to do this as well. California, Texas, Illinois, Pennsylvania. At this point in time, none of them have succeeded, but you have to start somewhere. So therefore, I say it's low to moderate in the viability of legislation. And the last one is amending this particular bill, which became code on the 1st of July, which reimburses the care for African-American grave sites for people who are African-Americans who live between 1800 and 1900 who are interred in the cemetery. They pay about $5 for the actual cost of routine maintenance times the number of graves, monuments, and markers. We've done a count, and it seems that we have about 266 grave sites that may qualify for that. We spent about $111,000 on the Mount Calvary Cemetery. I think with the support of the patron of this bill, who is Delegate McQuinn from Richmond, and I believe she's, we've spoken to her, and she's going, she would support our asking for it to be amended to include us. It's going to need a lot of grassroots advocacy. I've been in contact with Mrs., Ms. Breckenworth, thank you. Yes, Ms. Breckenworth, and she's very much keyed up to getting her group behind us and helping do some advocacy at the General Assembly for this. The amount of money that we request shouldn't be excessive if we have 266 graves. Right now, currently, the budget is, the state budget allocates $34,875 a year for, between 2018 and 2023, for the two graves that's, sites that's on this list, and that's in Richmond and Honraico.
How do graves qualify under this statute?
It has to be the grave or the grave site of an African-American who was buried or lived between 1800 and 1900.
So it's not by cemetery?
No.
So Lincoln Cemetery, why is it that one?
I'm not familiar with Lincoln Cemetery.
On De Creek Boulevard.
Oh, we haven't listed any, this is the information that I received from Parks and Recreation Director so far.
So when it says approximately 266 grave sites?
It's probably including those because he got the information from Ms. Breckenworth, and I'm told that she's, her group is the one that maintains these sites in the city.
So do we, do we know if that includes Lincoln?
The question I was, I asked, Lincoln is not a city-owned cemetery.
That's why I was asking, what's the criteria?
That's the question. Can, can it be privately owned cemetery to apply for these funds? And those owners of those cemeteries be made aware of this particular bill? Because where we are familiar with are cemeteries that the city is maintaining. So that's something Ms. Neal's, you would have to find out.
Yes.
Now, is it city-owned or city-maintained?
I don't have this.
It has to be city-owned or city-maintained.
That's what I don't know.
Yeah, I do not have the statute in front of me. I'd have to look at that, and I'll get back with you with that information.
You have to, good. Do maintain cemeteries, we don't have. Dr. Whitaker's question is, we wouldn't maintain a cemetery we didn't own.
I don't, I don't know.
We do not maintain, only cemeteries we maintain are the cemeteries that are listed as city cemeteries. That's the only ones that we maintain.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and the distinction being, there were some cemeteries that the city took control over. They may not have started out as a city cemetery, but they were given to the city. And I do believe if it is not limited to city-owned, I believe there is some limitation with regard to public, private, and nonprofits, because I did look at that legislation, but it's been a couple of weeks since I looked back at it. So there is some smaller criteria. It is not open to perhaps every institution or church that may have a very old historic grave site associated with, there are some limitations on it.
Well, my concern with that is with the discussion now that we have in about, what is it, Cedar Grove Cemetery?
Cedar Grove.
Where the proposed site of the monument.
Cedar Grove Cemetery.
Is that what, is it Cedar Grove?
It's Cedar Grove.
My concern with that is that the city maintains Cedar Grove, is that clear?
Yeah.
It's a city-owned Cedar Grove.
It's a city cemetery.
Right. I think if you go back and check the history, that that cemetery is probably, I believe is predominantly white, if not all white cemetery. And we know during that time that there was discrimination as far as where people were buried. And my concern is that we, we are subsidizing one cemetery over another because of historical discrimination is why the other is not being subsidized. Though, those African-Americans that were buried in Lincoln may not have had any other option but Lincoln and not be buried in a city-owned cemetery. That's, that's my concern there as far as how this funding is distributed. And it appears to be some possible inequities there. And to look at the condition of Lincoln compared to the condition of Cedar Grove is night and day.
We'll look into that and get that information back to council. Finally, dealing with the state legislative package, there were these two unresolved positions, and just need to know from council, if they should resurface, what should opposition be? And so that's dealing with the state piece. And then real quickly, on the federal piece, there's not a slide here because this was just given to me the other, last evening. I believe at your community meeting, there was a suggestion that came up dealing with the flood insurance and being able to make payments on it, about a monthly, monthly payments. And so I did a quick look into that this evening, I did a quick research. There are currently two bills in council that I came, I'm not in council, at, in Congress that I came across, that there's a S-1313. It's a bipartisan bill. It was committed to the Committee on Banking, Housing, and Urban Affairs on July the 7th for this year. Senator Warner is one of the members of that committee. And in that particular piece of legislation, it does include the ability to do make payments on flood insurance on a monthly basis. There's another bill that I came across, it's in the House, it's US-HR-2874. The sponsor is Congressman Sean P. Duffy. It was reported out of the House Financial Services on 9/11 of this month. And that also includes a, and a way to pay on a monthly basis for flood insurance. So rather than us asking for legislation, my thought here is that we should encourage our citizens to get behind these, to contact your legislators on the congressional level, ask them to support it, to get more information on these bills, find out where they stand, where they're going with them, and to get behind them. Yes, sir.
Ken, all right, go ahead. I've got a couple questions too, because.
Okay. Well, so we direct our federal legislators to?
We can also, yes, I was going to say, we could also send letters to them to ask them to support these particular initiatives. And if not the whole initiative, at least that aspect of it, because we'd have to look at the whole initiative to see exactly if it's going to be good as on a whole, or if there are just parts of it that are good.
Well, the issue that came up at the product community meeting at my table, the citizen brought up the fact that if you have a mortgage, your flood insurance can come out monthly, but for those who do not have a mortgage, they do not have that type of option. And so if it is a monthly plan that's within these two bills, we would want to see how that monthly plan is set up. Does that apply to mortgage or non-mortgage persons?
While we're on that point, is it a consensus of council that we back the best of these bills? And if so, I can send a letter on behalf of council to our congressional delegation. Is that the consensus?
Yes.
How do you hear what you said to back what?
Is it the consensus of council that we support the best bill, or both of them if they're not in competition with each other? And that I send a letter on behalf of council to our, to our federal delegation, our two senators and congressmen?
Yes.
Okay. I would be concerned that if we're clear, or if we make it clear what the concern is.
And that's, that would be the, the ask to the city manager to take what you heard tonight, and if it's, if it's clear, it does what we want it to do, then let's not wait and do the letter, set of?
Able payments for those who don't have them.
Yes. Can we go back to slide nine? Did you say that there's only 38,000 plus appropriated for this?
Yes, $38,875 per year.
Should we have a double-barrel approach where we're asking not only for the inclusion of Portsmouth, but also that there be an increase in the amount of funding?
Yeah.
My concern would be is that Honraico and Richmond may say, we've got a small pie that we don't want to divvy up.
Oh, definitely, definitely, definitely. We have to, you're absolutely right, sir. We would be asking for an increase in funding, so not only are we going to be doing the legislation, but it would be accompanied by a budget amendment to increase the funding so that we're not tapping into their funds. And so that budget amendment, when we get a good number, right now, this is the number that we're looking at. So we're still trying to get a good number on it. How many graves are actually, we're asking to have considered to be funded by the state for maintenance, grave, grave sites, tombstones, things of that nature. So right now, for the 260, well, I guess, it's a 266. $111 was spent on Mount Calvary, I'm sorry, let me correct myself, just on Mount Calvary, but I don't, I haven't received a final number yet on the overall amount, so we're still trying to get that.
I'm sure we didn't do anything.
No, but you know they're not going to give much. Well, it's a start. It's a start. Well, it's $5 for the actual cost of routine maintenance. So I guess it depends on how it shakes out.
I didn't catch that.
Yeah. Times the number of graves, monuments, and markers.
All right, so I share Dr. Whitaker's concern about Lincoln Cemetery. What are we asking the city manager to do here?
What I said to, just my thought, I need to know who owns Lincoln Cemetery. I think that's first. I think it's, well, we know it's not a city-owned, and finding out through Mrs. Neal, and the attorney, as they look at this, whether or not cemeteries outside of municipal ownership that are African-American predominant cemeteries can be considered and included in this bill going forward. Finding that out, then we will amend what we have to include them. So we'll get right on that.
Are we definite on who owns Cedar Park?
Cedar Grove, we own, that cemetery became a city cemetery in 1832.
That's a city cemetery since 1832.
Uh huh. It's first cemetery in the city of Portsmouth.
Okay, so at this point, I just need to, I need council to let me know. Yes, sir.
Do you want, how, what do, what timeframe do you want? Do you want us to send you our top three by email?
We would love for you to send, Mrs. Neal is looking down, we would love for you to send us. No, you didn't, we, we, we asked for you to rate your top six.
You did, yes.
You did.
Can we do it? Because I would recommend that we include HB.
I'm sorry.
That we include that for sure.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Anybody in agreement?
So that would be frame nine.
Mm-hmm, that's one.
I don't think that we should be led upon the ERC matter. That should be a statement. And I, the Secretary of Transportation told me that there was a 12-year prohibition on advanced funding, refunding of the bonds. Have you all heard that?
No.
So it's not so much buying, buying out the debt, but would be paying down, I mean, paying the debt service.
Right, but don't they have to float the bonds? They floated a number of bonds, and they have not issued all of the debt from the bonds that they floated a few years ago.
Well, ERC has floated bonds, but.
Something of the state.
Well, but our concern is buying out ERC, you're buying out their bonds. And according to Secretary Lane, that those bonds have a 12-year prohibition on advanced refunding the bonds.
Okay.
Okay. But I think as a, as a council, we should keep this as a part, yeah.
Is anybody in agreement with that?
So this is going to be a political policy statement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Also the voter restoration.
Yes.
Is that a policy statement or a legislative request?
Yes.
So that's the second one.
No, that's the third one.
Now, that's the third one.
I thought you said you wanted the ERC buyout to be a policy statement, not a legislative request.
If I heard you say that, I apologize.
So this is a legislative request?
Yes.
What, what's your?
The legislator is going to carry that, be a legislative request.
Well, we ask them when they come here. If we want to be one, all that concerns, no?
Can you say out loud the four, five things you just showed us, just in?
You got the felon vote, restoration of felon voting rights.
Cemetery.
The cemetery. Right. Now, the port, right, the money for the port and the study for J-Lark.
What was the last one?
J-Lark.
J-Lark, the study for the J-Lark.
That's got to be in the top three, to me.
All right.
This isn't going to be in anybody's top three. It's a policy statement.
All right, let's summarize.
Okay, let's do, go here.
The cemetery, the felon restoration, those are legislative requests. The J-Lark study.
That's three.
And then ERC is a policy statement. Is that, is that true?
Well, let me ask this, I keep hearing that it's isn't in the top three, as if it's not legislators, we can't tell them to carry it, because there's been legislation that we've been against. And so I think if it's legislation that we want in the council field to go forward and representing the citizens.
Set them all.
We should tell our representatives to carry it forward.
That's a very good point.
I agree too. What you wind up getting, nine times out of 10, when you do that, is that you'll put it in, and it'll say "by request" next to the word, next to the bill, which shows that the legislator doesn't have any skin in the game, and they're putting it in because it was requested of them, and it doesn't get a lot of traction.
So legislators would do that?
Yes, sir.
So we need to know if they do that.
It has been done in the past, yes.
Asking for what we want.
Right.
I mean, if we, if we feel strong enough about it, we ought to ask.
Right. Yeah.
ERC should be in the legislative requests, not a policy statement, that's politics.
And it has this effect on our citizens.
Yes, absolutely.
When I remember our meeting last year, this time, in October, when we met with our representatives, delegates, some of them carried two and three for us, you know, say, I'll carry this, or you'll carry, and they took all of ours. I'm on the assumption, if I say to the council, I'm carrying that, I'm not, I'm going to carry it, I'm going to fight for it, and I'm going to push it. And so that's what I'm thinking. So when we meet with them, and we only, we don't have many here, we've narrowed it way down, I think the council definitely can ask our delegates, these are our six or seven, this is what we want you to push for.
I don't have any problem with that.
No.
Am I in agreement on that?
It was our delegation's suggestion that the city pare it down to the top three, and not send a bunch of stuff up there any longer. That's, that's going to, they have to, they have to, they have to account for what they put in as well. So it's a, it's a two-sided.
We got four, right?
Oh, yeah, well, what I just asked, can we endorse this whole package? It's not that many, there's one, two.
You got, yeah.
Three, four, five.
There were seven altogether, if you're including the Payday London Act, and the modification of the HRT legislation, if you tool them out, you have five.
You told us we don't need the HRT legislation.
No, you don't.
So I can throw that out.
So then that's six, if you include the Payday London Act legislation.
That's not a bunch. All right.
I don't think so either.
Let's get a consensus, are you satisfied, we'll start at this here.
With the whole package?
Except for HRT.
Oh, no, can you go to the last page that you had? Are you, not that paper, are you including that in the whole package?
These are public policy statements, so that's not what, no.
So we're not?
Yeah, I just need to know where you stand on these, if you're supporting, opposing, or you should monitor them, but it's not going to be one of the pieces that we're going to ask our legislators to submit.
So, so why are they being brought to us?
Because, and the last time I came before you, along with our legislative initiatives, we also, there's some several public policy statements, and these were two that council wanted more information on, and so they never gave any feedback as to where we, what we should do with them.
Well, I definitely, number two, because that was never brought to us, SB 881, there was so much that we couldn't get it retired and full pay. That was sponsored by Senator Spruill, and for that to come from this local area, and we never heard a thing about it, and it went through, and I was asking you about that last time, I think you said it failed indefinitely.
Yeah, it failed. It doesn't mean you can't bring it back, he can bring it back if he should choose, yes.
And at the last meeting, I had asked for the impact of this legislation to come back, and we were going to check the fiscal impact.
If I'm not mistaken, on delegate, I mean, delegate, sorry, Councilman Whitaker, we sent all of that information to you guys, fiscal impact, the bill, the whole nine yards, yes.
The fiscal impact of that bill is an unfunded $1.2 billion liability on the state. So I don't really see why that's even being considered. It's a $1.2 billion unfunded liability.
Okay, you don't see why it's being considered by us?
Right, it's, I don't see why it's being presented to us for.
Because you asked us to initially.
No, I mean, as far, I'm saying as far as why it's even being presented to us, because it was never presented to us initially.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. I remember when we first started going through the whole process, this was something that she brought up, and you said that if it should come up again, you felt that the city should oppose it.
Right.
So that's why it was included in the list. But then when I came back the second time, and I listed everything, then there were some questions as to exactly what these two did, and you, the council asked for more information. We put that information together, and that was submitted to council, but we never got any feedback.
So council isn't considering supporting this?
That's what I'm here to find out.
That's what she's asking you.
Okay, so that can take, that's coming off. Okay, and what about the child daycare programs?
Not me.
No?
Take that off as well?
All right, let's go back now, let's go back to the legislative ask list. Six, are we in agreement on the six?
Can you say the six again?
It's everything but HRT, because Sherry is saying that they have gotten together with the city attorney, and it's your conclusion that the current legislation allows for that?
Correct.
Is HRT in agreement with our interpretation?
If you're asking me whether or not they will willingly agree, I doubt it, but the language is available to them.
In English.
Certainly.
Yeah. Okay. So that's what, am I in agreement then on?
Yes.
The other six?
So you're including the Payday London Act?
Well, that was going to be my question, Payday London Act. Basically, you said pretty much in the past, there's pretty much no traction on it, and so should we condense that, take that one out, not waste our time to put full effort on the other ones that we do support?
And again, this is one that we can, we can include as a public policy statement, saying that they should do something about these onerous taxes and fees, and then I can include this kind of information as well, about how many times it's been tried.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Nate has suggested that we take out payday lending. Is there a consensus?
I would say, I would agree with the public policy statement.
So we have now five, we're going to have payday lending, our position is, if a bill comes in to do this, we support it.
Yes.
Okay, so we're down to five, is that good? You're in agreement, Bill?
Yes.
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 Okay, I think you got it.
So out of the five, and I hate to belabor this.
Of our top three?
Yes, please, one, two, three, I mean, where we want to put our most effort.
I think our message is that we're not going to rank this up.
Port Authority, and cemetery.
Why they have to be ranked by us?
If we do the top three, then the other three are going to be by request.
Okay. What we're saying is, thank you very much, we're giving you a short list this year, and it's five.
Okay, all right.
I think the record will show that this probably is the shortest list ever.
Did we ever have it?
Yeah.
And can we let them know we're strongly against by request?
You can say that.
They're coming to me.
You can definitely say that.
By request has been around there for 40 years, yeah.
Or more, yeah. All right, thank you very much for your time, and for your feedback.
All right, this brings us to number three, Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, I'm going to ask, before I do the city manager's report, that we go to the City Council Report Vex, the document that's in front of you, and all of the report backs that we have presented over the, over the course of nine months now, this is the most detailed, because in here is your community meeting, and also in here is a citizen advocacy report back that will be made tonight by Mrs. Ho. After each of our meetings, we have Mrs. D. Wright that listens to all of the public work session and the City Council meeting, and make note of every request that you make of us to get back with you. And so you have in front of you tonight, from the September 11th through 12th, items that were requested in that meeting, which was, I'll just go over the top topics, historical timing for PPS payments, Quality Zone Academy Bonds, which the request was what projects are funded with the $4 million QZAB bonds, those projects are listed. You asked information on food taxes, provide a five-year history of sales and use restaurant food tax. The next is fire department overtime information, request provide overtime information on the fire department.
Let's, let's make sure everybody's comfortable with what we've covered so far.
Okay.
That's the front and back of the first page.
But I would like for you all, it'll lead you to read it, because it's information, that it gives you the information. Then, that Monday, we had the community meeting at Craddock Middle, and on that night, we have probably at least 30 items that we are answering here. Every question that came forward from your group was listed and an answer to that question that was asked by the public. Now, we have, I wanted members of council to have this document first, but we do have books that we can put forward to the public, and thinking today, I'm going to ask Mr. Pace to create a place on our city's website, the city manager's page, where we can start putting the report backs, so that, well, we're logging and keeping every report back, but if a citizen wanted to go on and just look at what was the report back from a meeting, they, and we have large viewerships of our meetings, so people are aware of what the questions are, then they will be able to see the answers to the questions. A lot of what was called to our attention, for example, pothole on Victory at Fire Station, those things were, have been repaired. Anything that was not an extensive, the work has started toward addressing. Here's the light traffic signal at Grant Bainbridge and George Washington Highway. An engineering study will be conducted to determine if a traffic signal is warranted at this location. The study will take approximately 60 days, so it's not a light there, but someone recommended, let us determine whether or not a light is needed there. We had more requests, and I think because it was in Craddock, we had more requests from, that related to the Craddock community. If you look at the Afton Theater, we gave you background history on it, and brought you all the way up to date on the Afton Square Theater, "Opening Soon" sign, and what is the status of Afton Theater. So it goes all the way through as to where we are right now with that. The closed, the Craddock Recreation Center, request, when will the city be finished on assessing the cost of reopening the recreation center? And here, we're dealing with that, a city's building condition assessment, the presentation is scheduled, or a late October public work session. During this presentation, City Council will present the current status of specific city buildings, to include the Craddock Recreation Center, which is closed, that are not currently in use, are in need of renovation. In order to determine, council will determine the future status of each building, and the consideration of how you want to move forward in the 2019-2023 capital improvement program. So that has been shared with the public before tonight, and that is where we are moving in that direction. If you see the picture here, we are having a problem in Craddock Square with drinking of alcohol, and that was, that came through with several comments. And so this is a photograph of a trash can, and if you look in the trash can, all you see is beer cans. So us working with the police department, that area officer, Parks and Recreation, who maintains the park, has already met with them, shared what the concerns are, and putting into place more monitoring of the park, particularly in the evening and after hours. All of the items, and we had three broad areas with several questions about Portsmouth Public Schools and Education. I sent those to Dr. Bracy, and shared with him also a FOIA that had come forward for information on Portsmouth Public Schools, so he will be getting that information back to us. Another area that is of concern, but it's not something that we could, and we've shared that we can't sob it overnight, is the bamboo in Craddock. And so it gives into, permits for land disturbance will require from both Commonwealth and the city. The contractor will have to adhere to the requirements of both permits during removal of the bamboo. The preliminary estimated cost for preparation of the stormwater management plan is $25,000, and the removal of the bamboo is estimated at about $30,000. A solicitation of bids for the work is also required. An update, the consultant will provide preliminary wetland determinations within the next two weeks. The erosion and sediment control plan required for removal will be completed by the end of October, and a short-form bid advertisement will develop that the plans are being prepared. New regulations and laws does not permit us to go out and just chop down the bamboo. So we have to follow what the laws are as it pertain, and we are working toward this end.
Excuse me, Dr. Patton, and which side is that?
At Craddock, it's out, out in that Craddock area.
Now, which parcel is that?
Oh, it's not, you're saying is it on?
Right, is it parcel one, two, three?
No, it's not on, no, it's not on one of those parcels, and Mr. Wright is here, exactly where, where in that back area.
Can you come to the left?
City Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, that parcel in question is a city-owned parcel that's adjacent to the shopping center, in that back corner.
But it is on city property?
It is on city property, yes, but we couldn't see it right on that, what Ms. Ashworth gave you yesterday. Okay. And it is acre, how much is, I mean, it's, how many acres? It's not two acres, I mean, it's not two.
It's between one acre and 1.5 acres, so it's somewhere right in the middle.
It costs $25,000.
School costs far more than that.
Plus, yeah.
$50,000.
Yeah, but, and can you talk a few minutes about why you have to do with this with bamboo? It's an invasive.
Yeah, so it's an invasive species, and there are certain things you have to, when you remove it, make sure that it doesn't come back. Before you can actually go in there, you have to make a determination if they're well-involvement, and because of the, of the area that you're actually going to be disturbing, you have to prepare an ENS plan. Because it's over an acre, you have to have a stormwater management plan, so it involves getting a permit from both the state and from our, from our city permitting for stormwater as well.
Here's a simple question, I think, can we just cut it?
Come back.
Well, if you cut it, it's going to come back tripled.
But, but if you cut it, it's.
Can you just go out there and I start cutting it down?
You can, you can cut it, it won't involve any disturbance, but it typically comes back and it'll spread, so you're just going to cause it to germinate, and you're going to end up with more.
What the public is asking for is to get rid of it, not because they're afraid of it.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I'm asking you alls.
I mean, I'm not sure what the public's asking. If it's an ASOR, we could cut it. If it's an ASOR plus, they want to get rid of it, maybe it's a two-step process where you cut it first and then eradicate it second.
We could, we could consider that. I could get with our team and then come back and tell you exactly what we will do, okay? All right.
She really likes grass, kind of like.
If you go over to, and then these are other areas where we're addressing the action plan for the cleanup of Craddock, where public utilities, libraries, and parks and recreation leisure services will be working together on this. Also, recommendation called to our attention, things that are happening on the library's property at night. They have looked at how other cities have signage up that will keep people from, you know, being in certain areas, that are in compliance with what kinds of signs that you can put up now, those recommendations are there. Next, there's the information, with backup information in regard to why the city of Portsmouth Behavioral Healthcare Service is a department and not a service board. And we have the information from the August 11th, 1998 City Council meeting, where those determinations were made, and we have that highlighted. Yes, sir.
In regards to that issue, the Healthcare Services Advisory Board that presently exists, persons who serve on that board, those are just citizens?
Yes, you all reported them.
Right, I know the concern coming out of the community meeting was that persons on the boards have more, need more expertise in behavioral health services, and it was mentioned other cities have that type of structure. So just, just like with the finance issue, we had to put people up there that had a finance background.
I think for the community service boards, which is different from the behavioral healthcare, yes, you want people on the behavioral healthcare advisory board that have interest that have interest in some background. But I think with the community service board, there's some specific positions or titles that have to, have to be filled, if, if it was a service board. But I definitely concur.
But we don't have a service board.
No, we just have an advisory board, behavioral healthcare.
So presently, the advisory board doesn't have any criteria.
No, I'm not going to say that. I'm sure that there are people, there are nine, I think there are nine.
I mean, as far as the.
No, it doesn't say that you have to have to be on there.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you send us a list? I mean, I'm sure it's in this, of the current board members and what their professions are.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. If you go, I'll try to move through swiftly. We've got all that. There was the request for our privately owned, single-family homes required to be inspected prior to the rental, to be rented out. Rental inspections are regulated by Chapter 17, Division 3 of the Code of Portsmouth. In accordance with this chapter, the city council established three rental inspection districts within those cities. Those districts are sewn on a map, and here's where you can see the map. Single-family homes and apartments available for rent and located in these districts are required to be issued a certificate of compliance prior to occupancy after periodic annual inspections and re-inspections. If there is no code violation found during the first periodic inspection, a four-year exemption may be granted for the structure. The next information comes, what is the funding or status for program and coverage for youth with mental health issues? And the city has a Children's Services Act, or CSA, of which in 2017, we were budgeted 2 million, 2.9 million. And we expended 2.8. And in 2018, we have a budget of 2.4. At this point, we've only expended 26,000. And we've served eighteen children, and seventeen, we've served 123. Also, call to your attention that our high schools in the area have partnerships with counseling agencies that are working with students who are having whatever kinds of crises or issues. Behavioral healthcare, the behavioral healthcare services does not have a mental health program component. It, it services adults. So through our social services department, that is where we're working with, through the CSA, with children who have issues that require such services. Lastly, we had Mrs. Ursula Murphy to come forward with five items, and these items are all listed here and answered. And Mrs. Hoag will make that presentation back public as you requested tonight during the citizens advocacy report.
Change, I see.
Oh, I'm gonna go to that now. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a very important report back that I'm gonna ask to come. It was not in here, but I'm gonna have it to come because last night we found out some information about a major thoroughfare. And VDOC has advised us to exactly what has to happen immediately. So Mr. Wright will come forward to provide that. And we really didn't get the information until after I got out of the public work session last night. Mr. Wright, and he has visuals. Thank you.
So this is involving the Turnpike Road project. This is Frederick Boulevard this morning. Shortly after 10 o'clock, late yesterday, I received a call from VDOC indicating that they had a couple utility failures as part of this project. The first utility failure involved a 30-inch HRC force main. They had a crack in a line stop. It, it wasn't a major, a major issue as far as sewage being on the road and in the construction area. However, do have a bypass pump set up, and that's being addressed. But about half an hour later, after I received that phone call, I received indication that they have a 12-inch water main leak on Frederick Boulevard. So what happened during that incident? They had a pavement upheaval, and then a pavement popped up, came back down. So you have a concrete road. Luckily, that you do have a concrete road. If you have a giant hole out there right now, if it was just a regular asphalt road, the concrete is providing a bridge over a void. So what you have here is the area here. You see the void underneath the pavement. Is there trying to do an exploratory investigation? So this is just to the south of the intersection of Turnpike, Turnpike Road. The excavator's sitting here. I'm standing here and talking to the VDOC. That's a little bit more of a closer where you can see there's a void under the road. So.
Could you go back to that and show, point to where the concrete is under the road?
So you see the concrete pavement thick there. You see there's a void with the water from the leak. Back up, if you back up a little bit more. So this is the actual travel lane going southbound towards the interstate. So that leak is approximately right in there. This is a January 2017 picture from earlier. So with this and meeting on site with VDOC, we can't determine what the extent of the void underneath the pavement is. So currently, this is Kroger here, CVS, the thing project that we did. Walmart's up there. Seaboard Square is on this side, and this is the PRHA parcel. This currently is under construction.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Wright, a question. And go a little slow.
Where's the cave-in?
Cave-in is approximately right in there.
Right there.
So the driveway down by the Dunkin' Donuts, down to the intersection to right about here, is closed. From here down to Dixie is closed, which is where they've been working. So they've been sequentially working their way to get to that intersection and minimize the traffic shifts on Frederick, so that once they actually got to the intersection, it was only anticipated to take like a week of work to get through that intersection. But because of this issue with the main break and also with the sewer, which the sewer issue is here, the apartment or manhole in here.
It's major.
Just for public safety, to be able to have the workers get in there and do the work, they're gonna have to shut that intersection down a lot sooner than they anticipated. A lot sooner than anticipated, we're talking Friday. So what they're planning on doing, is shutting down this entire intersection right here, getting as much of this work done and opening this back up so that, so if you get off the interstate, coming off of Frederick, you can go to the compound, but you won't be able to get through this intersection here. This median is gone, so they'll have pavement markings so you can get into the CVS from this way. And they'll open this back up so you can get into the CVS on this side. They'll also open up to right around in here to open up that other driveway right there for Kroger. Traffic that would, that would normally get off on Frederick to go to, to go to Kroger would be detoured. If you're coming from the tunnel, you'd be detoured to MLK and get off on High Street. If you're coming from the other side of town, if you're coming from the east, actually, coming from south, going northbound, you turn up, they detour you up Portwood Boulevard to Rodman, back to Airline, you come around that way. So they're, we're working closely with them on the detour plan. We've already advised fire, and so we'll be providing that information. Once we get through the meeting tonight, their, their intent is to meet with all those property owners that are gonna be affected, talk to those managers of those stores, let them know what's happening and how the detours are gonna be impacted. And then for those detours, specifically the ones on the interstate, it's gonna say, to get to Kroger, take this exit. And it'll be signed similar to how they had it signed when they were working on the MLK project.
And that's for how long?
A month. For 30 days.
At least a month.
For 30 days.
You know, we just got complaints about this on, at the community meeting.
Well, it's, it's major.
About the time it's taken, I read it.
It is a major.
Need to talk to them like, you know.
Actually.
And the gentleman that they hear, so that everybody knows, is VDOC.
They, they is VDOC, but actually, this, this 30 days and this intersection actually speeds the project up. Because we were trying to minimize the actual shutdown of Frederick, but the fact that we're actually shutting it down because they have to actually go in there and pull all that pavement up and then do the restoration back, it speeds them through the process.
Can we ask him if he would touch base with the, with the group that Tony's part of?
Tony who?
Old Town.
TBA.
TBA. Because they came to the community meeting, and some of the questions were about the timeframes here.
Yes.
And if you could just touch base with him, let him know. Mr. Godwin was, I don't know if he's still the president, but he spoke for them.
Old Town Business Association?
OTBA.
Okay, OTBA.
He spoke for them at the community meeting.
Yes.
And if you could just.
We could, a couple of weeks ago, when Mr. Wright talked about this project and the difference in Churchill and Bridge, and we're gonna be the lead in the Churchill and Bridge project. The city has never been the lead in this project, but Mr. Wright is working very closely with those VDOC representatives and meeting with it.
Because to the citizens, it's not VDOC.
Right, well, but we have to work with.
So we gotta make sure the message get out, because, because we can't, I don't count on VDOC to get messages out to our citizens.
We will get all, once, tonight, the presentation tonight. We told VDOC, as he's been meeting with them all day, we're presenting it to council tonight. They're ready, when he leaves here, to call them to say, we have a prized council. He will see by tomorrow what is the plan, which they have to plan, how they're going to redirect the traffic. That is not something that we can do. He will have that. They are required, they being VDOC, to talk with each of those businesses and apprise them. And then we're gonna put out on public information everywhere, the routes, the new, what, and that this is a VDOC project.
So they already have a draft detour plan that, that I've started to review. And they also have a draft public notice that they'll put out in the paper on the VDOC website and then send to us so that we can post it through our normal channels that we normally post the notice.
You know, these projects that have a high level of interest, like the Churchill and Bridge already has, this project, we need to periodically update it on social media as well as post it on our website where it's easy to find. Don't bury it, you know, back on page 10 of the website. We, I guarantee you, each one of us gets queried about the Churchill and Bridge project, the status of it, where we stand, why has it taken so long? Either from social media or people asking us in person. So if we can, if we can start updating those things periodically, I think it would be a big help to the public.
We shall do that. Any other questions, Mayor, for Mr. Wright? Okay.
All right, you want to go over here?
Yes, Mayor, we have the following city manager's report items coming forward. And one, I'll be asking Mr. Wright to speak to. We have adoption of an ordinance appropriating the $43.5 million by classification to the FY 2018 operating budget for Portsmouth Public Schools to implement the second quarter of the annual budget. We have adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 35 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, 2016 taxation by adopting a new Division 8 of Article 3 entitled "Exemption of Surviving Spouses to Certain Persons Killed in the Line of Duty." You want to say something about that quickly?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in this past legislative session, the legislature, the General Assembly passed a statute that placed the spouses of public service individuals who died in the line of duty on equal footing with some of our veteran widows legislation. We've put that legislation in front of you. It dovetails into the Line of Duty Act for the state. This was done in part because the legislation was passed, and there has been, to my knowledge, one inquiry. There is one resident that is inquiring about it thus far. And so speaking with the administration, we brought this legislation forward.
Okay. The next one is the adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in an amount of $43,641 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And this grant will be used by Portsmouth Police Department to deter driving under the influence of alcohol. The next one is an adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $15,556 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And this FY 2018 grants fund for the police department to increase usage of occupant restraints in vehicles. The next is an adoption of an ordinance accepting Green Streets, Green Jobs, Green Towns program. And this funding comes through a stormwater management category. And in the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund will be used for the implementation of the Court Street, Green Street conceptual plan. Adoption of an ordinance transferring $5,951 from the Traffic Inventory Project in the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund budget to the Western Branch Bicycle Improvement Project in the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund budget. And two, accepting urban funds in the amount of $297,561 for the Virginia Department of Transportation and appropriating said funds to the West Haven Bicycle Improvements Project, of which engineering and planning are working for. The next one is adoption of a resolution to authorize the execution of a programmatic project administration agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation for Traffic Signal Upgrades Project. And lastly, I'll read this, and I'm asking Mr. Wright, and he has pictures he will show. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a change order totaling more than 25% of the construction contract with Crofton Construction Services for the replacement of Area 4 of the Portsmouth Seawall.
So that's Area 3 of the Portsmouth Seawall, currently under construction. We have a walkthrough planned for Thursday, weather permitting. If that walkthrough goes well, it should be open next week or the week, or the week thereafter. So Areas 3 and 4, which this is, Area 4, which is the area between High Street Inlet and Ocean Arena, were bid at the same time. They're both constructed similarly, using a batter, batter, batter pile support sheet pile system. And the plans and specifications were done at the same time. The bid was written to provide the city flexibility award, one contract or two, depending on how the prices came in. So it was written, so you had a price for Area 3, a price for Area 4, and a total bid. So based on however the bid came in, you'd have different bid combinations to award it in whatever fashion was most beneficial to the city. As it turned out, Crofton was low bid on both Area 3 and Area 4. At the CIP at the time, we didn't have enough to execute both fully. So Area 3 being the one that we had to take the promenade off of, the one that would need it the most repair, we awarded that contract in full. And sorry. And for Area 4, we awarded the contract to replace approximately 544 linear feet, leaving 350 feet outside of that contract. With the current CIP budget there is funding and the FY 2018 CIP budget to do that 350 feet plus the seawall replacement down by the Holiday Inn, recognizing that there may be some cost efficiencies by having Crofton do the work. We have Crofton to provide us a price to do the work in Area 4. They held their price from the original contract. And so they provided a price that basically would have been the same if they had would have awarded the contract originally outright. So we're coming to you tonight with, asking for permission to go ahead and execute that additional piece to go over 25% in lieu of rebidding out that, that small 350, 50-foot section. So no work's been done on this section yet, so we're coming to you, basically asking for permission.
And this will complete them?
That will complete that section.
Can you quantify that?
To quantify the amounts?
Yes.
So the current contract for Area 4 is just, just above 4.4 million, right about 4.5 million. The additional works about 2.2, 2.8, 2.9 million.
Dr. Wood.
So when the bid was put out, Crofton submitted a bid for both Area 3 and 4?
Correct, there are four contractors that submitted bids. Each contractor submitted bids for Area 3 and 4, and then the combined total.
Right, and Crofton was the low bidder on both Area 3 and Area 4?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now, why are they requesting a change order?
They are not requesting a change order. I asked for a proposal from them to complete that section and to actually award that piece of the contract to them based on proposals they provided, have to do a change order. Because that amount will be 25% over the existing contract, have to come to city council to get permission.
That's the piece I'm not following. If, if they submitted a bid on both areas and were the low bid and was awarded the contract for 3 and 4?
Not, not full 4.
We didn't do all of 4, is what he said.
Because funding wasn't available. So they were only awarded the contract for 4.89 million, which gets you 544 linear, linear feet, so 300 linear feet for Area 4, which is approximately from here to here. It's not in the contract. So to go to, to award the 350 feet, I have to do it by change order and come to you to get permission to do that.
Right, so for, for that amount, though, why wouldn't that be put back out for bid if it's, it's 2 million some dollars?
It, it can be. They held their, they've held their price for two years, and that price that they held is still below the next low bidder. So, and there's nothing said it can't be. I'm just coming to you for permission because they're already out there, they're familiar with the work, and so that's council's decision.
I'm just not following why a change, why the request from management for a change order versus why it wasn't just resubmitted for bid.
It's just, it's process.
It's a, it's a much more efficient process. If they had to leave, we're gonna have to pay...
Mobilization.
Double millions for remobilization, and just 350 linear feet was not in it because we didn't have it approved, 2018 hadn't been approved yet, but...
You got the 20 in the budget.
Yes, now, that's why we are coming...
This is the time element.
It's the time element.
We want that thing fixed.
They would have to get the steel from, we were waiting for it to come from Germany. It was just so much, that's why it took so long to start.
So there's no procurement issues there?
No, no, we've worked very closely. Mayor, this concludes my city manager's report.
I have a question, and it was the callback report, and it pertained to the community meeting where the resident raised the issue about single-family homes getting inspections. Can you just let us know, in the report, it mentions that there are three districts, rental districts, and, and looking at that map, some areas of the city are exempt from having to get an inspection, and then some areas in the city are not exempt. Can you just...
I'll get that information back to you.
Why the criteria?
Why was it set up? I'll get that, sir.
All right, you have a...
You drop it.
For me?
I have a question.
Okay.
Dr. Pat, some months ago, back in the spring, I think I brought up a question that was being raised by some of the retired decent firefighters about a supplemental payment that was relative to the bonus that our active employees were getting. Getting some different information here and there, not today, but at the next meeting or before the next meeting, could you give us a timeline of when we have given supplemental payments to those retired folks in the last...
July and December.
Calendar year.
The last, last fiscal year and what we're in right now.
I shall.
So I can have that in front of me?
Yes.
And, and the amount of money it costs at, for those people at $500?
Right.
However many it is, times 500.
I'll have the report to you.
Okay. You can, you might wanna reference the public work session of April 25th, where there was a consensus to get back on the, the number of retirees that had 20 years and above, and, and some other information that was requested at that time, so we can get a report back on it.
Right, I'll get, I'll get that back.
Thank you.
All right. We have a need to go and close session, is our motion.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.1 for the purpose of discussion and consideration of candidates and recruitment for the position of city assessor and for the purpose of discussion and consideration of potential candidates for appointment to boards and commissions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Sumis?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes, we're in closed session.